Test, test.
How do I know if I'm on?
Test, test.
Okay, I just ask you all to please speak into the microphones. The sound levels are a little different in this room.
So you have to pull the mic up?
They're on.
You're on.
If my is green, you're on.
It doesn't bend.
I know it doesn't.
Oh.
It's cool.
Yeah, it's hot then.
Hold it like a singer.
You gotta move your seat up.
Who's that game show host had a little thin one?
You look vertically challenged.
You really have.
Vertically challenged, I'm six foot.
No, I'm vertically challenged.
You should have seen me try that podium out for me and Jan. It's right here.
Biggie, your little riser?
I am not standing on no darn riser.
I don't know. If you put a permanent one in, Nick will appreciate it, too.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order formally. It's eight o'clock on Friday, the 22nd. This meeting has been duly advertised legally. Correct, clerk?
It's advertised by the county. I did see it on the county calendar.
It's on the county calendar.
County calendar, okay.
As requested and following policy.
This is nothing new. This has happened in my years up here. Commissioners have met with each other as long as you do it in an open, public meeting. So I'm gonna go around the room since we're not video and everybody introduce themselves. I'm Carol Whitmore, County Commission.
Oh, she's pointing at you. George Cruz, District Seven, At Large, County Commission.
Hi, County Administrator Sherry Coria. And I'd just make a note for the record that the meeting's being recorded, and anyone can request a recording of the meeting, but we will not be transcribing minutes. Commissioners can take notes, we can take notes, but the clerk will have a recording of it.
Okay.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Jan Brewer, Director of Financial Management.
Vicki Tesmer, Board Records with the Clerk's Office.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Cruz for meeting today. The recent meetings we've been having lately, I can see that he has knowledge and passion on areas that me, being in office as long as I have with Manatee County, I haven't seen. So I wanted to learn more, and it's really hard at the dais when I only get recognized, you know, and I don't get enough time to ask questions. So I wanted to talk to you, especially since we're At Large Commissioners, and I don't really know what your passions are because I was, I didn't attend anything in the campaign, so I, on anybody. So I don't know where your interests are, and I want to tell you what my interests are. And if you have any questions on how I'm handling it when it's a district commissioners area, I would be happy to hear that. Before I start, Sherry, because I don't know what to do, some lady's gonna email me, and it's a lady who has a 16-year-old, 6'9" son, 350 pounds, hemophilia, autistic. It's something about a home. She has tried, like you suggested, whole child over the years. It didn't fit what she needed. I talked to her last night. She's trying to get him placed in a home. They found one in Tampa. She moved to St. Pete, she's from here, and they canceled it two days later, and now they want to take him to Palm Beach. And so she's in a, can, can enter, and I don't know what to do. He's got epilepsy, he's got everything. He doesn't talk very well. So.
We can, we can look into it for you.
Yeah, they're gonna send an email, and I'm gonna forward it to you.
Yes.
And then, if you could just keep me in the loop, it looks like we should also let our state reps know because she's upset that they're making her go all the way to Palm Beach, and whatever program she's in, APO, APD, doesn't pay for the family to help them to get down to see their family members.
Okay.
You know, okay.
Yep.
She works three jobs, you know, and she's single. So here's my notes on the back of my magazine.
I was wondering about that one those weeks.
Yeah. Okay, so if you can help me with that. Okay, George, since we cross lines with other commissioners, I just wanted just to tell you what my interests are, and then I'd like to hear what you're into, and so we don't cross, or I know what to refer to you, you know, because I don't want to take the world on. I just like, I would like to stay in my lane. And a lot of the stuff that you're interested in, that's not my lane. As you know, I'm, or don't know, but for years I've been involved with healthcare in Manatee County. I was here when we, actually, I was a nurse at Manatee Hospital when, and sat in the audience when the county sold to Manatee Hospital. But it was another company then. So I've been very involved with Inogen Care and healthcare in Manatee County, as you probably know a little bit about that. I am interested, as you know, in the social service programs. There's so much I don't know. Just being involved with this group, I started with Sherry during COVID, with the United Ways, all the organizations, Share, Season of Sharing, all these groups, Three, Two One One. There's so much I don't know. It's very mind-boggling, but I'm interested in that. As you know, Animal Welfare, Wildlife, Inc., I've been very involved with them lately. They've reached out to me. They are literally on a 50-by-100 lot, and they receive about 3,000 or 4,000 animals in every year. And then, what I was really interested in, oh, and just so you know, animal welfare, the animal shelter. I asked Charlie, just so we all have the facts in front of us, which really, facts do matter. The current shelter is a little over two acres inside the fence. The cemetery on its own is 3.4 acres, Inogen Care Cemetery, just so you know that. So those are the facts regarding that. I know you're into the affordable housing, which I've heard, you know, every time somebody gets elected, they're into affordable housing, and then nothing happens. And I have a feeling that with all your experience, maybe something can happen. I know when we, new commissioners have come, or new people have come, we've been really excited about, let's do something. And then I've had the development community say, I can't make money off of a house. I'm not interested. So I'd like to know your thoughts on that, and just what kind of things are you interested in?
Sure. Well, mine kinda sums up in one big broad thing. My interest is trying to focus, I think this will sound a little disingenuous, and it's not intended to be. It's to focus on people that aren't entirely focused on. So, and I mentioned some of this during that last meeting. Affordable housing clearly is at the forefront. In fact, the article in the Bradenton Herald that announced I was running last January, I think said affordable housing about 50 times. That's my background. I started right out of undergrad, working in an affordable housing fund. So I've always been involved in it. So this isn't like I kind of like.
What does that mean? I don't understand what an affordable housing fund means.
Back in the days, there's different ways to build affordable housing from a government standpoint. And a lot of my focus is on workforce attainables. That's not really government-focused, per se. But your government, for instance, a good example, Addison, right here, the new apartment complex that Housing Trust Group built, that used 9% tax credits. The new senior project going up right by the convention center on Haven, and that's using 4% tax. There's low and convincing tax credits. It's under Section 42 of the Tax Code, but that doesn't matter. They sell those credits. So back right after undergrad, I started working for the, what's now the single largest syndicator of those credits. We would underwrite these deals by the tax credits from the developers to help finance their deals. And then we would package them together and sell them to companies that could use the tax benefits.
What are, what are the advantage of a tax credit? Bring it down a thousand feet.
It's the single best way to finance something from an affordability standpoint. It's also the most onerous project to actually get through an application. Like, for instance, for a 9% tax credit, HTG had to propose how long they were gonna keep them affordable, how cheap they're gonna be, what the quality was gonna be, how much the community supported them to get it done, and they had to put an application in. Today, because the project's underfunded based on demand, only about $1 out of every $5 a request gets funded. It's about a 20% hit rate. And they essentially get, you know, almost all of the equity they need for a project from the government. So they'll go out and get a loan. And typically, it's a very cheap subsidized loan when you're building something like this. So their mortgage is low, but then the government more or less picks up all the costs the developer normally have to pay. And then the developer goes out and sells those credits because they don't have use for possibly millions of dollars in tax write-off. And they sell them to a company who buys the credits, and then the developer uses those money to build the project. So it's a great program because developers have to put very little money into it, and so they can do more of them. But again, you have to go through application processes, which are very onerous. I mean, an application can be four or five inches thick, and you have a 20% hit rate of being successful. In fact, the city, I believe, I don't believe it's county, but it was city, when they were looking to sell, like, Manatee and land and all that, and at one point in time, Marshall got one parcel. And, Marshall Gabadi. And the other parcel HTG was bidding on against a self-storage facility that promised a substation. And they gave it to the self-storage facility, and part of the rationale for that was, well, they're gonna go for tax credits to build this. We have no assurance they're ever gonna get the tax credits. Therefore, we have no assurance this property's ever gonna be built on. Whereas this self-storage facility, because God knows we need more self-storage facilities, can come out of the ground soon and give us a substation. So we lost the opportunity for HTG, which proved themselves, not only here, but they're building down on the brownfield on St. Row 70. We lost the opportunity for them to build us even more affordable housing because of the uncertainty of the tax credits, which I found a terrible, terrible rationale because I would rather the city and the county all get behind HTG and facilitate them getting those credits as best we could and get more affordable housing than get a couple hundred more self-storage.
Well, how do you, how do you, okay, that's where we always stop, though. How, do you have any ideas how we can do this? Because we need it.
There's a couple ways. And I'm on the, I've been, for a couple of years, I've been on the City of Bradenton's Affordable Housing Board. Mayor Poston appointed me about a few years ago. I'm now on the newly recreated Manatee County Affordable Housing Board. And so this is something I've always been working on. I attend part of Housing Coalition conferences in Orlando. I'm a Sadowski affiliate and on all their webinars, trying to support getting Sadowski funds. So this is something I always have been involved in. So there are a number of ways. Like I've said, both on the campaign trail and occasionally in some of these meetings and to others in private. There's community land trusts. Bigger counties have them, Orange County, Pinellas County. Sarasota has some version of it. Charlotte County, surprisingly, has a decent one.
Don't we have one?
No, we do not.
I thought Gallin.
We've talked about it in the past.
I thought Gallin did something.
We've talked about it in the past. We do not have a community land trust. But the advantage of a community land trust, the catch is you have to find the land and the nonprofit to facilitate, but there are nonprofits that will assist on this.
What about vacant land that we have?
Well, it's gotta be vacant, but you want it to scale. And the question is, do we have a piece large enough to do it? The better way of doing it is you work with a developer who's willing to work with you. That, we know, I know. But we've got some developers with a lot of land, if there's a way of facilitating it. But the catch with a community land trust, why it's so great is, at least 20, and today, probably even closer to 25% of the cost of a house is the land under it. The rule of thumb's always been 20% of the value of a home is the cost of the land. That's the kind of benchmark we use when we're doing quick back-of-the-envelope analysis. A community land trust is almost like a, I hate calling it this, but almost like a glorified mobile home park. Mobile homes, you don't buy the land under your mobile home. You lease it, and then you just pay for the cost of the house. That's how community land trust works. Is you go out, and these nonprofits and these developers partner up. They build the house. It's a nice house, but it's, you know, attainable housing house. You're not getting marble bathrooms. But, you know, it's a nice house that's safe for your family to live in. But when you go to sell it, say, it costs you $200,000 to build that house. Well, you're not selling the land under it. You're only selling the house. So you could sell the house for 150 grand. And then they sign, the buyer of the house signs basically a lease with the landowner. The landowner gets some nominal couple hundred dollars a year in rent. It's very low. That gets charged straight through the tax rolls. So they know they're getting paid. They have a lien on the property if it doesn't get paid for some reason. But part of the problem with for-sale affordable, that's why almost every affordable unit you see is rental, is it's hard to control for-sale. Because once you sell it to the first person at a cheap price, that person can double the price and dump it six months later. Well, with a community land trust, they have to sign day one a resale agreement that specifically states a percent increase that they're allowed to sell it for year over year based on a percent of the cost to build the home. And if they sell it for anything more next, we can't legally stop them from selling it for more. But the agreement basically states that any overage they give back to the landowner, so they have no incentive for selling it more. So that's, that's one of the few frameworks of for-sale, affordable, attainable housing that exists in the market. So I've talked to a few people. In fact, Legal and Voters just did Affordable Housing Panel, and I helped them set it up and introduced them to all the people on it. And Frank.
Was on it? Marshall?
No, Marshall wasn't on it. The main one that people were interested in was Frank Wells. He handles Bright Community Land Trust, Bright Communities. It's up in Pinellas. He's also worked with people in our Orange County. So he's big in a community land trust. He's right up in Pinellas. I know he's, I believe he's come down here and spoke to people in the past. I don't know.
Is that something a county has to do, is to offer this program?
No, anybody can technically propose it and set it up. It's basically a zoning-type thing with a blanket law on it. But, you know, I think always waiting for someone else to propose anything is, you know, technically, like, if we talk later about a charter, citizens can go out and start a charter. You just need enough petitions, not a lot of them, but enough petitions. But every charter that's ever been done in Manatee, not Manatee, in the state of Florida, with a few exceptions that were legislative, have all been started by the board. It's just, a board can not only push things through faster because it's a lot more manageable, but it can lend some air of support behind it. So if we trust a private developer to start a community land trust, the question's always, well, is the community gonna support this? What are they gonna do? But if the board steps up and says, we're pushing for this, it gives a little bit more reassurance to the nonprofits, to the banks that can finance it. They know there's some meaningful support behind it.
So are you, have you talked to anybody, or is anybody interested, or?
Yeah, no, I've talked.
Have you had an educational process?
I've been formally talked to a number of people about it.
What about our developers that have all this land, or the farmers?
That's the big catch right now.
Yeah, I know.
Because it's not just the farmers. Because I'm sure if we talked, you know, we all know the same people, and some of them are more than willing to carve out a little piece for a school, like Pat up at Havel Farms. And I know John Faulkner was talking about potentially a piece for some soccer fields. So they're, they're involved in the community because they benefit when the community benefits. So they're willing to do it. The catch is, with any type of attainable workforce, affordable housing, it's almost like a catch-22. Where it works is cheap land, but when you get to cheap land, you don't have transportation, and you're further afield. And then you start adding transportation costs of people having to drive and pay gas, and you either have to extend bus lines, or you don't provide bus lines. So it's kinda like, where land is available isn't where you want the land. So that's kind of the catch that you have to deal with. But there are community land trusts, to your point about the surplus land, which I still think we just need to dump out on the sidewalk and let people pick it up like they're rummaging through garbage, is you can do a community land trust with piecemeal pieces. It doesn't have to be one contiguous parcel. So you can do it with 10 units here, 20 units here, with like Dennis Schumacher over at Habitat and people that. Just Steve Reinhardt's essentially doing a private version of this. He's not really selling the land. He's just selling the houses at a reasonable price. This, you can actually sell the houses for probably about 25 grand less than he can because you're not transferring the land. But he's kind of building the product that you would put on this, up in Palmetto.
Okay.
Morning.
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 Okay, this is our meeting, okay.
But yeah, so that's just one, that's just one example. I mean, there's others. We can, I could sit here and talk all day, and I won't because that'll tie up all of our time. But, you know, there's also things about, you know, increasing more incentives, sort of like what City of Bradenton's doing with Ron over here at the First Union Building. Relative, because, you know, they're allowing him to go up 12 stories and limit parking ratios, things like that. It makes it attain, you know, it makes it cost-effective for him to build that and provide the lower-priced point units. Lower price point is a relative term, but that's at least the intent. There's also smaller units. I've proposed in the past, I proposed on the campaign show, that, you know, some places like Sarasota, talk about half-units. You know, if someone builds a 500-square-foot unit instead of a 1,000-square-foot unit, even if they charge normal-market-price rent, you know, a buck fifty a foot, say, that's still only $750 a month. A teacher can afford that, people can afford that. They're not giving anything up. You don't have to give them any incentive. It's just cheaper because it's smaller. And most, especially young professionals, empty nesters, people that just don't need a 1,200-square-foot one-bedroom in a brand-new waterfront property. But nobody will build me 500 square feet because I still charge them a full-density unit. I still say, you have to give me two parking spaces, plus one for every 10 units for a guest. I still tell them, you gotta give me $16,000 in impact fees, or $13,000, or whatever it works out, depending on what year it is. It's not affordable to build 500.
I heard there's something going away at the state that if you're doing something like that, you may not have to pay impact fees for affordable housing. Did you hear that?
I don't know if the state, I don't know if the state, is that something?
Let me just, for the record, say one thing. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge entered at 8:18.
Oh, we, yeah.
And I just wanted to also mention to all of you, we are taking minutes. So if you want, you don't have to write everything down. Originally, we thought we were just gonna be recording, but the clerk's gonna produce minutes as well. So I was.
Like word-for-word transcript?
No.
It'll be similar.
It's gonna say.
That would have been 10 pages.
Just so you know, we do summary minutes.
Summary minutes.
Well, because it's not video, so I didn't know if it was like a formal transcript.
What about like the urban core? I mean, have you, since you've been in this for a while, are designated areas where we are kind of allowing that? Have you talked to anybody that's, that is interested in that? I mean, I keep thinking of, by John Horn's place, that gigantic parking lot. Guy doesn't want to sell it. He makes money for the, from the tenants. And we've approached him in the past.
Which John, here's four of them. Is there one, the one down by Asia? The one on the land side?
Yeah, that gigantic parking lot, there's nothing in there. And actually, we've talked about this very type of use for it, but the owner doesn't want to. Have you, has anybody talked to you?
Yeah, a lot of people have talked.
The mall?
There's a couple. I would like nothing more than to get my hands on that mall. In fact, I was actually looking at it from a finance standpoint about six months ago, trying to keep them out of bankruptcy. And then I realized maybe I'm better off having them in bankruptcy.
I heard they were gonna do something.
They declared bankruptcy to get out of a defaulted mortgage back in September, October. So I don't know what the status is. Bankruptcy courts take forever. So that kind of slows things down. But the last proposal I saw from them didn't include affordable housing.
Didn't?
No. And that land, it's 55 acres. I mean, your best bet on that, and it's mostly impervious surface. You need to scrape that thing down with the dirt. Put a lot of green space. It's main to main. It's literally equidistant from the river and the airport, and equidistant from the airport to Lakewood Ranch, right on, you know, the main corridors of Manatee County. If you can get a lot of green space on there, you could put retail on the ground floor and residential above it. I don't care how high you want to go on that. Get a bunch of units in there. You've got a transportation hub across the street, you know, over by the supervisor elections. It's an amazing location to do a lot of good for not only that area, but for the community as a whole. You could put amphitheaters, things there. It's a huge parcel of land. But we don't have access to it. It's not our land, so.
And there's major drainage issues. I remember in the old days, it used to flood up to our knees. So, but I'm sure that would be resolved. I know Wears Creek got dredged, so maybe that helps some. I'm not sure.
I don't know. But it's all concrete right now, so nothing's coming through.
Kevin, what we're doing is having an At Large meeting. I called because I never went to anybody's thing on the campaign, and I know everybody keeps saying, well, we talked about this on the campaign, but I didn't go to anything. And then he's brought so many things up, just like at the last meeting, I took notes of the stuff that I don't understand. And I don't get enough time at the commission meetings to talk, as we all know. And so I just wanted to get down to see what your interests are and how we, as At Large Commissioners, not interfere with the district commissioners. And that's what we started with at the beginning of the meeting, just so you know.
And I'm hoping I don't. Like I mentioned in that meeting, my focus is on bigger things, not on day-to-day things. You know, affordable housing, which is community-wide, Charter of Government, which is community-wide. Like I said, everyone talks about infrastructure, and it's great because we do need more roads and wider roads and more efficiency. It took me forever to get here today. I mentioned that when I walked in, just because I got jammed up.
Yeah, but sometimes just paving over doesn't, like, look where I live.
A hundred, a hundred percent.
Two lanes.
And that's where I was going. That's where I went with it in the meeting. Everyone else can talk about infrastructure because individual district commissioners have specific roads.
Right.
James can talk about Canal and Moccasin Wallow. And now we're talking about Ninth over by Kevin. And different people have their areas, Lorraine for Vanessa. But, you know, my focus is on the non-paved roads. My focus is on the greenways and the trails and trying to make just a healthier, better quality of life here.
And when that kind of discussion happens, I usually, because you'll hear certain ones, you know, ring the bell louder than others, and then we know there's major issues all over the county. And for years, we've always heard, and then we don't hear anything about West County, North County, the older part, you know, and South. So me as an At Large Commissioner, when I'm hearing a commissioner saying, we need to do this right away, stop everything else, I go, no, no, no. As an At Large Commissioner, I'm responsible for everything, not just that district. And that's why I tend to maybe put a damper on it, Debbie Downer. But say, there's other areas that have been in that CIP for years that are major, like Canal Road, you know, stuff like that, that we've been working on for years. And so you're right, you have to look at the whole picture as an At Large Commissioner.
Yeah, and that's my, that's my focus. My focus is on that. It's on the global things because, you know, we've got people like Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, who just walked in, and he has a lasered focus on his district, more so than I could ever possibly know. And that goes for every individual district commissioner, as they should. So I could either sit around and spend 20% of my time in five different districts, kind of half-assing five different districts, or I could say, okay, let me look at the bigger picture and let everyone else focus on individual districts, as well as county-wide stuff, because I know they all have county-wide concerns. But why don't I focus my attention on the global stuff, on how we work on, like I said, the affordable housing and the non-paved infrastructure, how we work on the charter, how we work on workforce as a whole. Right after this, I'm meeting Jerry downstairs, and we're gonna spend three hours touring around Southwest to talk about TIFs and CRAs and how they've worked in the past, how we can utilize them more in the future. And that's what I'm doing the rest of this morning. And that's what I'm doing the rest of this morning. And those are all countywide, global issues, and that's where I'm focusing more of my attention.
And on that, with, with the areas in town, again, I think, to me, my responsibility has been, you know, I don't get into details like you. I just try, you know, I hear about it at all the meetings, I read everything, but I gotta keep a perspective on the entire county and not forget those that are gonna be forgetting if they're more quiet than others. And that's why we have plans that we do. I actually had written, affordable housing, how are you gonna push them? Which, you know, we still gotta figure out how to push with the business community. You know, the Marshall, and I wrote, have you met with Marshall?
I was actually supposed to have a beer with him two days ago. I know Marshall, I know Marshall fairly well.
Yeah.
But he's been spending more time up north just because of COVID. So he only comes down every now and then, but he got tied up at the airport. But actually, it's funny you say that, because we were, he was on my calendar to have a drink with on Wednesday night.
Yeah, so, and he, he knows how to play the game, and he's got the cash flow. I guess his father and Pat Neal's father were developers together.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and they built Players Club in Lombo Key, I think, years ago.
Really?
Yeah, it was some kind, it was a resort that I'm very familiar with. I think it was Players Club, but he told me so. He goes way back in the community. I had written, again, looking globally, the things that are going on with COVID and stuff. Again, I don't try to get into details with everybody's district. But the county unemployment that we will be seeing and a clear message to the public. Because, and you all know, this is so confusing. And I actually have sat down with Karen more than once. And if you haven't, I advise you both to, to go one-on-one with her, explaining what's going on with these programs for the citizens. Because this reminds me of what happened during the recession. Yes, it was mainly the construction. It was one item, we had all our eggs in one basket, and I understand that. But these people were begging to us, you know. I know this mortgage assistance is gonna help, but as far as, I always, and I feel we need to have a clear message. And it's so complicated for you guys to understand, but we're the first ones to get called. And that's why I make a point of meeting with Karen. I don't know if you've done that, Karen Stewart.
I've spoken to her about our CARES program and things like that, probably not to the same extent.
You probably need to, she broke it down for me, which was very informative. And then I've met with her a couple times since, because it changes.
It's coming back to the board on Tuesday.
Right, but we see the fast picture.
It's the new rental. It's obviously, you're welcome to meet.
Oh, the 12.8 million? Yeah.
12 million, yes.
12 million.
Yes, it's, it's coming back to the board for a discussion and consideration of the guidelines. But yes, of course, anytime.
I thought we approved that last meeting.
It's the actual requirement for executing it.
Oh, it's the actual, I got you, I got you.
And the criteria that we have put out.
Now, that has to be audited by the clerk and all that, and they have to go through the same hoops.
Right.
Okay. And unfortunately, that's, I'm not sure if you're, you guys are getting it, but I'm getting it. It's so hard. And I talked to Karen yesterday. They just aren't getting the information that they need to get. And it's a requirement of the clerk, right, Jan? It's a requirement of the clerk before we submit it and the Treasury.
We follow the guidelines put out by either the Department of Treasury, or in this case, this program's through, through what we normally have in our affordable housing program, through either CDBG or the federal government for ship with state. So they'll send separate guidelines sometimes or separate rulings, and they might change throughout the weeks and months of the program. I don't know how many times, Jan, the Treasury guidelines changed. I'd say 30 times throughout the CARES Act from June to even right now. So we get those notices, we go back and we look at them, and then if there's a significant change, then we have to bring that back to the board for approval. But normally, the, it's a broad enough guideline that we just have to require certain documents. And we will be audited by the federal government.
Sucking up our staff, too, because all this, we're, this is sucking up our day-to-day operations, all this.
You know, it is. However, for the new rental program, we'll be going over this next week, is that we're gonna have a separate unit that's not our staff. It's the temp, it'll be the temporary folks that we have working CARES, because they're, they're slowing down on the previous CARES program, and we still have some of them. They're going to just be doing the rental, and we actually have a temporary person, a manager that we're bringing in just to run that portion, because that money has to be spent by the end of September.
I was just talking to somebody who's complaining because code enforcement doesn't appear to be where they were. They're getting reassigned. And I had to explain to this person that I know that our code enforcement has gone, had to go to the inoculation tents, the vaccine tents, and also had to cover the beaches, the parking lots. And that's something new that they've been doing in the last six months. So we have had to spread, and I don't know if you, you knew that, right? Yeah. And so our staff's being put in different positions that we haven't before. But I just think, how are you handling it with regarding this? Are you getting any, I'm getting citizens, maybe because I've been around and they know to call, but citizens about trying to apply and then not, or not knowing that they can apply?
You're talking about like CARES and PDP kinda stuff? Oh, yeah, no, I get, I get a lot of emails on them, and I either just direct them out or, you know, most of the people that were complaining to me had more to do with the fact that it was, we were sitting on some money and we weren't sure if it was gonna roll and be allowed to use it again.
But it did.
Then we ultimately said we could. So that alleviated a vast, vast majority of the comments I got about it.
Usually, I always copy, and I don't know how you're doing it, but any emails I get where I talk to staff or something like this, I copy Sherri. And then in that case, I'd copy Karen and Jerry, because I wouldn't know which one it would go to. And they filled it out. And Sherri, should we still be doing Tell Us at MyManatee 311?
Yes.
And then for stuff like this, too, even though we copy you? Okay, so then you got a record, right?
Yes, correct.
So if you, Tell Us at MyManatee, right? Yeah, I have it, it's automatic on my, on my computer now. Okay. So the unemployment, I'm really worried about, and we talked about this as an overall global picture, and you too, about getting jobs on the street. Because that's what we actually were able to do last time. And people that probably weren't in this world before were able to keep working. So, you know, just getting more jobs, and I think the board gave direction the other day about we need to get some more jobs on the street, smaller, low-hanging fruit, so we can keep our citizens working. Every time I talk to somebody, they maybe had two jobs and now they're down to one, or their spouse is laid off. So this is, this kinda stuff keeps me up at night because it's a trickle-down. Then they can't pay their electric, then they can't go to daycare. I know a guy that owns a construction company. He wanted to know where the food pantry was because he can't afford daycare and that. And he owns a, he owns some kinda business. He may not, you know, he's just a regular guy from West Raydington.
You're the construction company right now, you're not working.
Yeah, he says, I'm embarrassed, he goes, tell me where it is, you know?
No, I, I hear what you're saying. There are people that need jobs, and more importantly, or more pronounced, I believe, it's people are underemployed, not unemployed, to the same extent.
Right.
Because I know what you're saying about the last recession, but that was massive, and people were homeless. I think unemployment in the state of Florida right now is like 6. something. Kind of benchmark ideal unemployment is honestly around like 5%. We were, we were under-unemployed prior to all of this. We were at 3. That's, that's not a sustainable unemployment rate.
Yeah.
That's, that's almost too much employment. As much as you hate to say that, because everyone wants a job, that's just the reality. You know, from an economic standpoint, that you're better off plus or minus 5% unemployment. So we're not crazy off. We're not sitting like back, we were in April and May, where it was at 11%. Jobs are opening back up, it is coming back. DeSantis is giving assurance that we're not gonna close things back down. Hopefully, that gives people reassurance to hire some more people, because they're not at risk of having to lay them back off two weeks later. I, I think the bigger thing we need to take away from it, and the bigger thing we needed to take away from it in 2008, and I mentioned this, this a bunch on the campaign, is, you know, we have a very cyclical economy here. And we should've learned that in 2008 and put programs in place to fix that problem. And, you know, my concern is we're going to do the same thing again.
What kind of programs?
What?
What kind of programs?
Well, well, because the industries that dump the fastest in a downturn are the very industries that are the lifeblood of Manatee County. It's, it's construction and real estate, it's tourism, it's services. And they're the first to go down, they're the last to come back up, and that makes up a vast, vast majority. I mean, other than the hundreds of financial advisors around town. You know, those are the industries that are, that are around, that we have here. And we need to diversify that. And how you diversify that is getting more companies in here, getting more innovation in here. That's why people like Sharon over at the EDC and Jackie at Chamber are so important to work with in all of our chambers. But it's a chicken and egg problem, because you can't get a company to move here unless you have a workforce for them.
Right.
Because it's too expensive for them to move their lower-level people down here. And you can't keep a workforce here unemployed, because they'll go to Pinellas or Orlando or Atlanta or someplace else. So it's a chicken and egg. Like, you have to keep the people here to get the jobs, but they won't stay unless you have the jobs. That's a problem with every community.
Or the housing.
Or the housing, because the young kids just getting out of USF and SCF, they can't afford a 1,300-square-foot efficiency at Aria. It, it's just not sustainable. There's no job that helps them pay for that. So that, that is a trick we have to work on. Some of the things I mentioned, you know, during the campaign, I've talked to Sharon about this, I've talked to Jackie about this, I've talked to Carol Probstel about this, is, you know, setting up mentorship-type programs that build some of our higher education students now into the community. They start feeling like they, they've got a connection to the, the business community, they're getting introduced to people. Sarasota started something like this, the Gulf Coast Community Foundation is the big program. I was involved in it, I helped set it up, I judged some business plans for them. They were trying to get their people from, from New College and Ringling and schools down there into the business community, because then they feel like they wanna stay. And if you can keep them here long enough, and you could do that through, like I said, smaller units, a little better cost of living, a more vibrant urban core. You know, give them a reason to stay, and then run out and find your JP Morgans of the world, and your finance companies, your tech companies, and your, you know, make, you know, your innovation labs, and start building the diversification. And we're slowly seeing that to some extent, but it's very specific. Like, you know, we had that whole core program, to extend it, comes out more formally, comes out at 70 in Lakewood Ranch. There's supposed to be like a big innovation tech lab hub. And then you have the Brain Initiative down there. And, you know, we certainly have, are starting to diversify into the sports science with IMG and Premier and Benderson. But, you know, these are things we need to leverage.
I heard Gatorade went to IMG.
They have been there, they have a Gatorade sweat lab.
They have a head injury place.
Yeah, they have a sweat lab.
And a sweat lab.
They do.
Oh, I didn't know that.
But that's why I said a few weeks ago, months ago, I don't know, November, December, that we needed to protect the land around the port. Because the last thing I want is for people to run out there and slap up 1,500-square-foot houses surrounding our port, because it becomes landlocked. And then our port can't grow. We need more air products, because if we can get more companies like that, then you're bringing in, and manufacturing jobs are very well-paying jobs. And they, they work perfectly with MTC, because MTC will flat-out build a program to specifically teach people how to do that job at that new company.
They did for Air Products.
Correct.
Is Sharon working on that?
She is. But in fact, me and her talked at length about a piece of land right next to like the FedEx building up there. We're still trying to figure that out because of some fees or something.
Well, they have a FedEx right down on that area.
Yeah, right next to it is a personal land, but it's cost-prohibitive for somebody to do something with because of some back fees and taxes and crap.
And, you know, we fund, I'm sure you know that, what do we fund EDC, like 400,000, 450 a year?
It's around, it's just over 200.
Used to be 400 when we first started, okay.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm just, I'm not gonna throw out a number that's not accurate, but there's, there's some separate issues. But we do have that, we do have economic development scheduled to come back up for discussion. And as Commissioner Cruz said, there, the EDC has some other things coming up soon. But we do fund the EDC for some external work that we collaborate with.
And they have, what's his name?
Max.
Max, okay, yeah. Okay, so they have, she has two people?
For the EDC, there are more, there's more than that.
There's more than that, the only two I've talked to are Sharon and Max.
At least, I think.
They're kind of the forefront, and they do their EDC minute, which takes three minutes.
They have their own, they have their own financial investment.
But yeah, so that's, that's how we don't, that's not how we fix unemployment today. That's how we fix unemployment 10 years from now. The next time, the next time this comes up. The other thing, that's why I'm meeting with Jerry, well, I'm meeting with her for a number of reasons, but to look at Southwest District and what the CRAs were, what the TIFs are. You know, I know there's as many reports that say TIFs are completely worthless as that say that they're successful. But there is an advantage to convincing people to build someplace where you let them know that you're gonna build up around them and support them. One of my problems with the Southwest, and maybe I don't have a problem, I'm gonna go tours, maybe she explains it perfectly and it sounds great. But on the, the high-level surface with no working knowledge of it, one of my problems with the Southwest is it's too large. You can't convince somebody to enhance, say, 14th and around Sammamette and say, hey, let's build up this area, because then you start providing employment close to where people live, and they don't need transportation. Well, if you tell them, hey, here's your incentive, we have this great TIF program, and the incremental taxes you're gonna pay are gonna go to improve your property. And then all those incremental taxes go out to fix up the waterfront out by Anna Maria Oyster Bar, because it's in the same district, because you're not restricted to it. It, it doesn't give, provide incentive. But if you do a small one by like the Neighborhood Action Plan up in Parish, for instance, like, how do I get all these people? Well, once we get sewer, how do we get all these businesses to come up here? How do we get more employment by Parish and more, you know, services by Parish, so they don't have to use our roads and drive all the way here? Well, if you create a small little district there and say that those additional tax funds are gonna stay in that small area, you incentivize people, because they know, over the next couple of years, you're gonna get better streetscaping, you're gonna get more parks, you're gonna get better curbs and streetlight. They know that their incentive we're offering them is immediately benefiting them. So I've always looked at it like the smaller the TIF, the smaller the district, the more it would induce people. And if you look around here, and you look at some of these pockets of areas where there's higher unemployment and more issues with transportation, that's where you can start diversifying some of our, our businesses a bit. You just need to convince people to build there.
If I recall, the reason why we, the TIF is like what it is, is because we wanted to start with IMG, because we have all that property that we're gonna redevelop, which we knew. And the, the money's coming from there, the property values is, helps the rest of the TIF, i.e. the DeSoto Mall, areas out in Sammamette, help me out, guys. But, but.
But you have to use the money there. They're not, you're not restricted to build it out there. And that's why, you know, in the past, people have complained about.
We just approved a project for like, we just gave.
I'm not saying no projects. I'm not saying no projects, we have a little roundabout over there and things like that. I'm just saying, people complain about street lighting and sidewalks and conditions like that, which, you know, they're banging their head up against the wall to get done. And, you know, that's part of the people I talked to during the campaign are the people down there, the people up in Rebonia, the people out in Maaca. That's where I focused a lot of my attention, and that's why a lot of people in those areas are the ones who reach out to me. Like I said from the start, my focus is on the global side, not on the micro-district side. But it's also on the things that maybe the people who can't show up every day and put their three minutes in, or don't have all of our cell phone numbers in their cell, that's where my focus is. Because that's, you know, things like affordable housing, things like the charter, things like greenways, things like, you know, up by the port, working on, you know, I've had these talks with Chad and everyone about sidewalks and streetlights and things like that in places that, you know, could use them. Like, I think it's great that Rebonia has their sidewalk project, which is like a sewer project with sidewalks, because they desperately need it. And it took a while to get that done, because they just don't always have a voice here. And that's what, kinda why I ran in the first place. I had the background in the job creation, I had the background in the affordable housing, and I, I'm used to seeing big picture. Like, I ran a fund, I didn't go out and do every individual deal. I came up with a strategy for it and hired the people to do my strategy. That's how I've always done things. So that's kinda how I'm coming into this.
Sherri, just, just for an example of Rebonia, we tried for years. We didn't have the cash, you know. It's, again, since the recession, we, we just now, like last year, surpassed what the budget was when I started in 2006.
What we ended up doing out at Rebonia was we needed a.
You and I met with the neighbors.
Well, we needed a community plan, we needed, in order to be able, in our world, to attract other government-type funds or to be able to expand some matching funds we might have, we needed an actual adopted plan that assessed all of the properties. So we, the board funded that, we got that completed, and then we were able to then actually go to Washington, go meet with the Department of Housing and Urban Development and try to, try to find additional money. Then we partnered with Swift Mud on bringing in the project. It is a very complicated set of puzzle pieces, I would agree. And that is why we had started to have community plans that the board adopts in various places, like the Parish. We just adopted that one, the one for the Pride Park area, excuse me, was it the Pride Park area? Yes.
That's old, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that we could then be a part of also bringing in additional monies. Those things do take time, but.
Pride Park in the TIF, it is, right?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. I mean, it is big, but we were trying to fit, our whole goal was to get redevelopment and to get, get, keep the taxes down and use those monies to redevelop or incentivize to do it.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's, it's a great program. I, I love TIFs. If they're, I just, like I said, my, my concern is if, if you're doing a TIF just to promise some amount of money to a big group of people, then that, that's one thing. If you're doing a TIF for the sole purpose of incentivizing redevelopment, then I always feel that incentives work better when they're directly beneficial to the person you're trying to incentivize in the first place. And this does not guarantee that. You know, it's sorta like even with, to a lesser extent, our, our impact fees, like, because they're forced to pay it. They're not, you're not recruiting people to pay impact fees like you are with, with bringing people into a TIF. But, you know, some of our, our impact fee districts are so massively large that there's no guarantee that the impact fees are directly going. That's why impact fee tax credits, that's why public-private partnerships are so popular with the, the Niels and the Probstes of the world, because they can more laser-focus their impact fees to their immediate benefit, which is great, because that ultimately becomes a benefit to the community. But that's an exact example of how a TIF can work versus not work. If you tell somebody, hey, yes, you're paying impact fees, stop complaining, but I may take your impact fees from Parish and use them up in North Palmetto. They're like, well, how does that help me, number one? Two, how is that affecting the impact my homeowners are creating?
When you drive to Palmetto, it may, but yeah.
It may, but the point is, it's not directly impacting it compared to widening Moxon Wallow in front of North River right now.
Did you reach out to all the acute cares, yeah, the hospitals?
I have meetings with every one of them on my calendar.
Thank you, thank you, good. Because, you know, they're taking care of the indigents, you know, and the private and the, the public. And Blake is doing real good because of the population that they serve. I mean, Blake, well, Blake always has, but Lakewood Ranch, but Manatee is the one that's getting, it's the safety net. And it's so complicated. And do you understand, what is that, the, the funds that we're getting, Lip Funding and all that? They'll explain it to you if you don't. You need to get that from Mark Tierney, he's the CFO there. You'll, you and him will have a heyday together. But he's the one that can explain, and also our staff, too. Joshua's gone, do we have a replacement for him yet?
He's only been gone for about, oh, wait, five days.
Oh, okay, so he didn't give us enough, we haven't advertised him.
We're gonna have to talk to Kim about our slow hiring process.
I know, so, okay. Okay, I got a couple of things I wrote down the other day when you were talking, because I was just, okay, I wrote, we heard about this week, transportation and stormwater. Okay, what if, and, and we're, you know, we hear what we hear, but then we hear from the public and they say something else. So how are you gonna address that? I mean, how, yeah, I mean.
That's the most broad statements I've ever been told.
It's whoever's the loudest person at the meetings and then. Whoever's the loudest person at the meetings, and then it kind of seems to always change the direction of the board. And to me, no matter what we do, a leader leads, they're not a populace, a leader leads. Um, you listen to your public and you, you make the decision, but to me, you, you, and you do it respectfully, as you know, I, I don't call people out. But, um, a leader leads, and, um, transportation with the impact fees, I've always, you know, I mean, I have not had any issues with the impact fees. Um, I know it's a necessary evil, um, and I was interested in your comments about it the other day. Um, your numbers totally screwed me up when you were talking, um, about how you broke it down and.
Oh, yeah, I actually talked to Nicole about that after, I just wanted to let her know, I wasn't calling her out, I'm putting together a wrong table, and her table was factually correct, I just.
I was asking Jan, that's why I asked Jan to come to, to explain it, have you guys had your briefing yet, um, with, about the CIP?
That's this afternoon.
No.
Oh, you guys are getting, you'll, you'll be back?
I'm here all.
Oh, my God, okay, well, my eyes crossed and, oh, good luck. But, um, this kind of addresses what you said the other day, so I don't know if you all had it, did you have it already? Transportation, uh, the CIP thing from them, I just had mine yesterday.
Yes, we have.
You have, okay, okay. Yeah, okay, so, um.
Free budget work session.
Anyway, tran, uh, impact fees are always.
I'm sure that's in the minutes of public comment.
Yeah, oh, yeah, Kevin Van Ostenbridge's public comment said yes. I mean, Commissioner.
He's waving his last two minutes and 55 seconds.
Uh, no matter what we do, if we don't do 100%, you'll hear it for your whole, the rest of your term, I mean, that's just the way it is. Do I believe that people should pay, to me, that study, you can go from zero to 100%. And I thought we were pretty fair, we went to 80, correct, Jan?
Yes.
For a year, and then we were supposed to go to, um, oh, 90 and then 100, and then we just kept it at, at 90. Because you just, uh, you know, our prices fluctuate, I just remember, and, and you know, our reserves, we can't have our reserves in there longer than seven years and they have to be used. So, um, your thoughts and all the numbers you're spewing off, it, it kind of justified what we were doing with the impact fees, but I wanted you to go over it again.
Well, all, all I said was we're.
And then Jan, to see if it really jives with, you know.
It, it was kind of a twofold thing, I think they're both kind of, well, not both, at least one of them's kind of pieing this guy, kind of just more philosophical view of things.
Bring it down to a lower level, like, I'm not a finance person, if you can.
All I was saying is, you, you're collecting impact fees off of a very small group of people, and we're trying to do a lot with them.
6% or something.
So if you're only gonna collect impact fees off 9% of our total sales, then.
That's it.
You need to tighten your belt a little bit, because if you're sticking your entire burden on 9% of people, you know, giving them a little bit of a, a discount doesn't hurt. However, we have a report that was created by very sophisticated, smart people that says, this is our analysis, and here's 300 pages justifying our analysis.
And you're okay with that?
They're way smarter than the Seven of Us relative to impact fees and analyses of transportation miles per home and all that. So, you know, in a perfect world, you charge what they tell you to charge, that's why you hired them to do it, otherwise you could just pull a number out of a hat. But I, I have a hard time doing that when you're only telling a handful of people you're paying for all of it. That's why I had mentioned, in a perfect world, there's some sort of a shared responsibility with some form of a broad, you know, broad-based funding opportunity. Uh, that's why I specifically leaned over and looked over at Bill and said, hey, do we have any control on our doc stamps? Because for virtually pennies, you can spread it over 91% of the rest of the population. Because every home in here is gonna sell, on average, every plus or minus three to five years or seven years. And you don't have to charge $16,000 for that home sale, like an impact fee, you could charge $16 for that. Maybe not 16, but it's 90, it's, they're 90% of the sales. So you can charge minor dollars across everybody and get the same 100% impact fee. But maybe you're doing 30% developer, 70% resale, or 50/50, or whatever, you can even start, you know, stepping it down. I don't know the, the framework, but to me, that just makes a little bit more sense. And part of it had to do with talking about '08 through '12, or through '12, because nobody built anything during that window of time. And so we had no impact fees, and that's when the schools, like, oh, we're not, we can't build any schools, and nobody can else do anything, and let's drop our, well.
But we lowered them, too.
That's great, but now we're, now we don't have roads. Because you lowered them, it's like, maybe if we wouldn't have lowered them, Mox and Wallo would be four lanes right now.
Yeah, but new development, to me, shouldn't be responsible for current conditions.
That's my point.
Only for the new development.
But people living here can be responsible for current conditions.
Right.
And during '08, '09, '10, '11, '12, millions of houses and office buildings and hotels and retail sold. May not have sold for what people wanted, may not have been sold by the owner, it could have been sold by the bank, it could have been sold by, by a private equity fund who bought up a pool of foreclosed homes. They sold, and all those sales paid doc stamps. So even when Pat and Carlos and Lennar and everyone else wasn't building anything and paying $0 in impact fees, they were still paying something. So we could have kept some stream, it wouldn't have been 100% stream, because you would have lost that other half of it, plus their older values.
Are we allowed to? I thought that state was talking about that, um, a couple of years ago.
That's why I asked Bill, and, but I'm saying that's something we need to look into.
Remember the state looked into it, guys, a couple of years ago, about, uh, somebody produced a bill about us getting some of the revenues from doc stamps?
Well.
Do you remember?
I don't remember the.
I don't remember the outcome, it didn't happen again.
Current, yeah.
I mean, they do change, though, that's how Sodowsky Fund came about in the first place, was adding to the doc stamp.
Each year during, um, the September, October timeframe, we'll get new, anything that was passed by the legislature, but I'm not aware of anything.
That happened a couple of years ago, but I think it died.
But, but, but here's part of the problem I have with, with impact fees is, you don't know what you're gonna get, and nobody does, nobody impacts their own neighborhood, because it's a timing issue.
Right.
Right now, you got a bunch of homes getting built, you know, just to keep using this example, because it's easy, at North River Ranch by Pat. Well, he's gonna be paying impact fees on all those homes, thousands of homes. But those dollars aren't necessarily gonna go to Mox and Wallo and places like that, because there were thousands of homes built down in, uh, like, over further west in, in Parish. Or further south, like Silver Lake, you know, or Silverleaf and all those things.
But he built those.
And, and those, I know he did, I'm just using examples, which I know is progress. But that, a lot of the impact fees he's gonna pay are gonna go to those improvements, because our CIP is a five-year plan, it, it's a long-term process. So he's gonna pay down, those impact fees are gonna fix that, and now he's gonna have to sit here and cross his finger and hope that, you know, Faulkner or Alan Jones or all these other people who are talking about big projects in that same district. Get their houses built, because those impact fees are gonna fix North River Ranch stuff for impact. But at some point in time, just like a Ponzi scheme, somebody gets caught holding the bag, because all those people who built houses in '05, '06, '07 paid their impact fees to help the people who built homes in '02, '03, '04.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They didn't have anyone build in '08, '09, '10, so nobody paid impact fees, so those people didn't get their impact paid for. And that gets alleviated if you have a broader-based funding source, because you may not be able to do everything, but you can keep doing something. And that helps the quality of life of the people who bought all those houses and effectively paid those impact fees. Because we basically promised them, you're paying $10,000 in impact fees today, we're gonna get you that money back through improvements for the, the roads by you, the parks near you, the libraries. Well, there was a group of people that didn't get those improvements for years and years and years later, because the funds weren't available.
So you're talking about possibly, um, doc stamps, maybe a revenue source.
I, I'm sure there's other, there's other ways of handling it.
Can, Jan, um, can, uh, what Commissioner Cruz has just said, do you have any comments on that?
Um, the one thing I just want to comment, the, the Florida statutes, Bill said it the other day, I thought really well. The Florida statutes and the constitutions directly direct your ability to levy whatever you need. Um, as Sherry was saying, during, when you have the sessions that go on, they have the ability to alter what's going on. But you, the problem is, you're stuck in the framework you're in right now. But you, of course, can lobby to get them to change and to alter. Um, the state, doc stamps, he's correct, I mean, they're levying on everything. So, but it's just, the problem is, you as Board of County Commissioners have specific tools that you can access, let's say, of where you can help assess this money, and that's not one of them right now.
Where's that money go, doc stamps, anyway, now?
State of Florida.
Go state into their general fund, okay.
Well, then you, annually, you receive your allocation through the State Housing Partnership Initiative, so, from the Sodowsky Act.
Which we never get.
Well, correct, no, we have the history of that, it's been very frustrating, extremely frustrating. But, um, you do support the affordable housing, the continuation of affordable housing and, and increasing the receipt of the money coming back to the county in your legislative platform. But I don't believe we specifically say in there that you want changes to the documentary sta, uh, stamps, um, specific allocation. So we may want to get more specific about what you say in your legislative platform.
Yeah, because the Sodowsky Fund is a, is garbage, and I've, and I've said that, I've said that straight to Will and Tommy's face, it's a mess.
Why don't you ask to have it on the, on an agenda, on a Commissioner's report, just to bring up that, then, and see what the board does.
Because I actually mentioned this, and it almost, I almost blew up on him, to, um, Newton last year, year before, well, he was a, we, we brought up Sodowsky Fund, not to fear off into Sodowsky, we're talking about Sodowsky. But he said, hey, nothing is, nothing's promised to you to give you that money, communities need to step up and fund their own affordable housing. So I looked at it, said, dude, you have my community's money. First off, it's called a trust fund for a reason, um, so you kind of are promising that money to me. And second, it was my money from my community, we basically handed it to you, and you're supposed to hand it back, so it is my money. So that's why I told Will and Tommy at one point, look, if you guys are gonna keep doing this, either admit it's a slush fund and stop calling it a Sodowsky fund. Or get rid of it altogether, allow us to continue to charge those doc stamps, or maybe even sort of like, like, sales tax. Say, hey, instead of 15 mils, just like we do with, with sales tax, we have that 1%, tell every community, hey, we will allow you to personally charge between 0 and 20 or 25. Those onto your doc stamps that go directly back to you, and you can allocate them however you so choose. And, and a community can put 15 of those into affordable housing, which essentially is Sodowsky Fund, but guaranteed fund, because we retain it. And you still have that extra five or 10 that you can do for things like replacement of impact fees or something of that nature. And just tell the state, get out of here, because you're just stealing my money, so you can create a slush fund to build the world's largest ball of yarn for, you know, some other town, because you needed a vote somewhere. Like, that's not what this money's supposed to be for, don't keep bragging to me that you have a balanced budget, because you don't have a balanced budget, you have a balanced budget, because you're taking it, you're taking other people's money. That's like me saying my family's a balanced budget after I rob a bank.
Right, okay, just, uh, we got a half hour still, um, you all right?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, I just gotta meet Jerry at nine thirty.
The, the storm water, I'm not gonna get all into that, but can we, do we agree, or I agree? I mean, it's not, um, I, I, the water starts and it goes into the bay eventually, and kind of you said that the other day. So how we address it, I had written, um, down below, I got, uh, and I have maybe, uh, my thoughts on it, but I don't know how you felt about it. Um, because again, I'm looking at overall, I'm not looking at districts, I don't really know, I'm not gonna step on anybody's toes on that. And you know, um, like Kevin, there's a few, and I, um, I'm gonna mention Kevin that's in the public right now. Uh, when you have issues that are coming to be, I've been copying you, is that okay? Is that what you want me to do? And then like, um, Reggie had something sent to both of us, and Reggie yesterday, uh, I referred the person, um, to Ray Dowling, remember?
Oh, Suzie's email, yeah.
And I copied her, and I said, I forwarded this to Ray Dowling, but, um, please respond to Reggie, and she did. She's gonna, Reggie and somebody else, Suzie, so, I'm trying not to step on your toes, and it's easy not to, as long as you copy the district commissioner's, right? Do not respond or tell the person to.
Oh, yeah, and I do, and that's how, that's how Reggie got involved with the whole Lopez family.
Reggie's district's hard for me to ever remember, sometimes I'll, I'll do his and, um, um, Satcher's, because I'm not sure whose district it is. And I don't know how they handle their complaints, if they answer their own complaints individually, I answer all my own emails. But my assistant has never answered mine, I, I get really upset when they do that, I don't like the pancake responses. I, even if it's just, thank you for your information, to me, I've always learned to do that, it's more personable, I don't know how you do it. I have the CIP on the road plan, I guess you're gonna, um, be meeting on that later, right?
Yes.
Because I wrote, CIP, what about if the roads are, oh, oh, no, I actually prepared something, what am I doing, I almost forgot. I have something to pass out, I asked Clark about this, because I didn't know.
Do you have a copy for the clerks?
Yes, I do. But once, um, and then I got one for you two, and I have one for the public. But one, um, once you're, uh, once you're in the plan, what happens, like, because you guys were saying you wanted to redo, you may want to redo the CIP plan. But once it's in the plan, where does it, I mean, what?
I, I not once said that, just.
Well, some did, they wanted to look at it and redo it, it's their plan now.
I, I do think the CIP needs to be looked at, which we do.
No, I agree.
And I think we need to, we need to agree that if we hypothetically said we're thinking about doing something at one point, then that doesn't mean it, it's set in stone. Because sometimes you find that there's greater needs in greater places, and so we gotta look for the greater good. That said, if it hits the CIP, very, very, very careful about making those changes, for a couple of reasons. One.
Concurrent.
It, it's public.
Right.
And if you start promising a road widening, or a, a park, or something, or a, a trail, and then someone starts a subdivision, and they're going around telling all these homeowners, hey, we got a, we got a horse trail coming over here, we got this big multimodal sidewalk. And then we say, yeah, you know what, we need more pickleball courts someplace else, so let's yank that, that, that's just a problem. And second, people, uh, you know, start planning these things, and I hate wasting money. So if we're gonna start doing design work, and we're gonna start pulling funds, we're gonna start gearing these things up, I, we need to take that to completion. It's like, it's just a waste to be at 30% design, 6% design, and say, yeah, you know what, there's a different road we want to focus on, we just threw that money in the garbage.
Once we're at 30% of anything, then we, uh, that means they're start projecting the costs and everything, so if you stop that, you've wasted money.
Yeah, so, so, yes, I, I agree we need to look at the CIP, because there are times where something changes. We thought growth was going one direction, and it's like, oh, they veered off this way, but I'm not a proponent of, let's take the CIP in its entirety, throw everything on the table and revamp it from stage one, because that's not practical. Because we promised people, here's the next five years of what we're gonna do, you can rely on us. I mean, hell, you see it in our Land Use meetings, it gets brought up, when someone says, well, is that really a thoroughfare, is that blah, blah, blah? It's right in our report, it will say, well, it's on the CIP, it's in the CIP, it's gonna be done in the next three years. We rely on that information to approve a zoning, what happens if six months, nine months, a year from now, we change the CIP, that's no longer on there? Does that change our approval process on that entire zoning? Can we rescind that zoning, because we rely on that? It doesn't make sense.
Clark kind of said that, um, that you kind of have to be cautious, because at certain, that certain points, because I, I wa, I asked him when I left him a voicemail, do, do we still have concurrency? Because, you know, we don't have it like we did, but, but they do, at a certain point, they rely on that. And also on the other attachment, I asked Tom about our stormwater basins, and I got a list of all of them, and I'm on that state, um, advisory board that I actually had, uh, yesterday, and Matt Caldwell's on it, you, have you, have you ever heard of him?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's on it with me, and, um.
Property oppression.
Yeah, well, yeah, and he was the state rep, but we, we were talking about, um, this, because, and, and I asked staff, too, and they, and I asked Sherry. You know, if we wanted to do, I think that we've done seven of our basins so far, if we wanted to do all of them, we can't be guaranteed that SWIFTMUD's gonna pay us back 50%. So at a, at a board meeting, we should talk about that sometime, because, um, even at that meeting, they said, you know, I said, we're trying to look at efficiencies in government. And I brought up, well, I got this little incident in Manatee County, where we want to do the rest of our, our basins, do the studies at once, because it's probably more cost-effective, and that's the whole purpose of the board. But then they all said, well, does the state have the money? You know, like, FDOT will pay you back, if they got the money, they'll pay you back in the, in the program year, I don't know about with SWIFTMUD. So maybe at a board level, we should, I don't know who could find out from SWIFTMUD, Sherry. But we, we discussed that, and it would be so much more efficient, because it sounded like the board wanted that the other day. But then, if we're not gonna get paid back, why should we, if we're fiscal conservatives, why would we pay 100% of all the, the cost if we can get half of it back?
Do you know Dennis, the rep for SWIFTMUD?
No.
He's down in Sarasota, I can give you his contact.
Okay.
I actually just talked to him last week while, sitting in Phoenix.
You know what, why don't, why don't we give it to Sherry, and maybe somebody from staff can ask if, like, we upfronted, does the state, does SWIFTMUD have a? does the, does SWF MUD have a program like FDOT does?
Yeah, we can follow up with.
Okay. And then here's, here's my ideas the other night, and I, I don't know if you've had any experience from this.
Dennis Regosta. Do you know that name ring a bell?
Sorry, sure.
Dennis Regosta?
Thank you.
I don't know. I'll send you his contact.
Okay.
He's our, he's the SWF MUD rep for this region. He's based down in Sarasota now.
And Public Works is normally the, the engineer is usually our main contact, but out of Chad's office. But I'll, I'll contact him first.
Maybe you could, so at the next meeting, whenever we talk about this, we could have an answer.
Sure.
Because I think, it sounded like the board really wanted to move forward. Okay. My idea, and I brought this up at the meeting yesterday with Sherry and Jan when we were going over this wonderful budget stuff. You know, and I don't know what your thoughts are, because you guys, I'm, I'm very conservative. I ain't, I'm not going to ever raise a tax. Sorry, I'm not going to raise property tax ever. But, you know, there's a way that we could grow our money and still not raise taxes. And I'm looking at public safety, the sheriff, you know, everybody says they don't, and sheriff always asks us for more money, but there's, maybe there's a way that we could do this. And also the stormwater fee. I know we're using it through utilities. And that money is in a line item in utilities. We don't have to do a separate fee for this. But we already have money programmed every year. What about, and I asked Jan, I says, have we ever thought about a line item in the budget? I mean, I think on a property tax bill, we just started putting something with the sheriff.
If I may, currently, you have several line items. You have a countywide millage, and you break it into general fund, transportation, library, children's services, and also parks. So it's divided into,
Oh, it was parks.
Dedicated millage that we move, yeah.
Yeah, that was new. We did parks. And then, so that stays in that fund. And not that you're raising taxes, but as our, as our values goes up, it does grow a little bit. And then they don't have to come back asking us for money. I don't know how much it would grow.
That's literally what I proposed last week. I said the same thing about, from Misty's standpoint. Misty asked about, or not asked, but comment about raising lowering millage on an annual basis. It's a nightmare trying to go up and down and tie it. That's why I said the same thing. I said, well, if we're going to keep millage flat, or ideally maybe give a little benefit, maybe starting next year, as Kevin mentioned, you know, keep it this year, and then maybe look at it. But get to a base and keep that base. So there's less, is millage going up or down? But come up with more of these dedicated funds. And I, I brought up a couple of them, like, like affordable house, like Orange County, just to circle back.
We don't have a line item for affordable housing, do we?
We don't. That was the point, that was the point I was making is we don't. Because what we have is a big pool, we have a big pool for general, you know, for county commission.
No, we do, we do.
Well, I mean, but that's not, that's not a line item on the tax. That's not a specific mill. We have livable amount of T where we throw money into livable amount of T.
Correct.
But what I meant was,
There you go.
If, if we have this big pool of general fund, in theory, some of that should go to healthcare. Some of that should go to affordable housing. Some of that should go to, you know, various pockets that we deem to be high priority pockets. But it's still left up to all of us, who barely know what we're doing, saying, well, we got this pool of hundreds of millions of dollars. How do we want to spend it? And it's too easy to say, you know, let's spend some here, some there. And then all of a sudden, you look around and go, oh, crap, we forgot to do anything with affordable housing. Or, oh, we didn't do anything with healthcare, because we blew it. What if you have dedicated buckets? You know, and that's why, you know, everyone talks about Sarasota's mill, millage rate is lower than ours, but their taxes are. And it's because they've, they've kind of just more allocated, and then told their county commissioners, look, we don't trust you. You're like drunken sailors with our money. So we're going to take like half of your money before you're allowed to touch it. And we're going to say, this much goes to the, down there, the hospital. This much goes to, and they break it out and say, we're taking this money first. Now you people take what's left, and you figure out how to dispense with your, your change over here. And that's how they do it. So they pay the same taxes, but some of, that's why Sarasota Memorial is like, you know, world class, because they get their money every year. They have a whole board for that that gets voted on.
Yeah.
But that's, that's part of their taxes. And they don't pay more taxes. They just pre-allocate their taxes where they collectively deemed it most important.
On, on my list that I had written for a line item, I had written the sheriff, well, sheriff would be under public. No, I think sheriff should be separate. Public safety, because everybody wants to know where your money is going to the sheriff.
Well, sheriff and public safety have to be separate, right? Doesn't the sheriff have its own independent budget compared to like Jay?
Because they're not with the county. But I wrote the sheriff, public safety, and healthcare. And I never even thought about affordable housing.
Well, Orange County and a, any bigger city has a dedicated.
Do you know how much we play in healthcare a year? I mean, not just hospitals. I'm talking, do you know how much our budget is for healthcare?
No idea.
27 or 8 million. Because we're mandated by law to pay the jail medical, which is about 6 or 7 million.
Are they talking about getting rid of that if you have insurance?
That's what I've been doing. I've been working on that for years. No, it's actually going to the state again this year. I'm on that, on the next committee.
I thought so. I thought I saw that. Because right now, even if someone, if an inmate has insurance, we still pay their health insurance. It's ridiculous.
We have to pay what they charge. And then also, we pay for Manatee, I called it Manatee, what is it? Centerstone. And then, and the hospitals. But there's other programs, indigent prescriptions.
Department of Health. Would you let, just let Jan real quick list what she has in Medicaid?
Oh, the Medicaid share. I forgot that.
We have a Medicaid allocation. The, one of the largest is, of course, the jail medical. You also have the Department of Health that you have to mandate.
That's like 6 million.
You have to do the medical examiner. I mean, it, it's a laundry list.
It's all in one group.
It's all in one group.
And you know, any, do you know what the Medicaid thing is, that that's an ask mark to explain that to you at the hospital? But, but if one of our Manatee County residents goes to Pinellas and ends up in the hospital?
I've heard something about that.
We have to pay Pinellas, or they, yeah, we have to pay them.
Healthcare responsibility.
For taking care when you go across jurisdictions. So anyway, I was thinking, and I've been, I was going to wait till budget time, but I wanted, since we were having this meeting at large, to tell you what my thoughts were. Because I don't want to raise millage rate, but we have certain funds that people are very committed to, that we, that always ask us for more money. Not, not the healthcare. But I, I still think that's a way to keep them solvable, and in the public, it's transparent.
And not only is it transparent, but if, if we have dedicated mills, we can do more with it, right? Because now, just like the land conservation tax, we, we put this nominal little amount on there, but we can bond it up to $50 million. If we have dedicated funds for some of these things, it's not just the, you know, million bucks we put into it for, again, just circling back consistently for theme, for affordable housing. We can now look at that and say, hey, we can, we can leverage that. We can use that to create even more money, to create an even bigger fund, if we have an opportunity to do something like a community land trust, or a major project that is transformative to, you know, the cost of living.
That would be in that fund then, right? Affordable housing.
Yeah, because what we could subsidize is the, the impact fees, other things. We can basically put livable amount of T on steroids by having a nominal amount, if we can prove to, to somebody, this is a dedicated funding strand.
We've been talking about this for years, years and years. Every time a new commissioner comes, let's do something with affordable housing. And then you get the people that say, not my backyard. But we really need to do something. We really need to do something. And I think that's a good idea. I never even would have thought of that. That's all I had on my notes, but I wanted to know, okay, so your interests are, you know what my interests are?
I do.
And I, if you want, and that's what, as long as you never respond, I can copy you on stuff that's countywide stuff. And I've done that with some of the commissioners too. But I don't write, do not respond. And I probably should, but then the, then the citizen knows. I mean, I don't know how to handle that. How should I handle that? Do you want to stay in the loop? My problem is, we as, as at large, we do not know what's going on in the other districts. Because, unless we are at a board meeting and somebody gives us a report.
Yeah, it's hit and miss.
Yeah, it's hit and miss. So I don't know.
Sometimes, some people seem to, to figure it out, and it'll be like,
Communicate.
Me, you know, like Kevin, you, and I in one email. Like, people realize, hey, let me focus on these three. Other times, it may go just to Kevin, and then he'll forward it on to everyone. You know, Vanessa does that a lot, just saying, do not respond, or passes it to Vida and say, please distribute. And I read all of them, because they all do matter. Some pockets of places are more inclined to include me, like the Mayakas, and the Palmettos, and the Parrishes, just because they, they know me, they know me better, and so.
That's what happens to me. And I don't want to, I don't want to tread on anybody's toes, because, you know, Kevin's got that district, and I, but I've been there 52 years. So people tend to contact me. So I tell them, and that's why I've been copying Kevin. And I had to do the same with Steve, because they can even know.
Right. It's not as many as you think. I would say maybe 30% of my constituent emails, this is Kevin Van, this is Kevin Van Austin Bridge. I would say 30% of my constituent emails are only addressed to me. Most of them address everybody, and a few will be you and I, meaning Commissioner Whitmore and myself. And then a few might be the three of us. So maybe 30% are just to me.
And what I was thinking, and I wanted to be, first with the, have an at-large meeting, because again, we're the ones that can help you all. We're the ones that can look at the bigger pictures versus just in your districts. And, but I didn't know if you, and it's up to the district commissioners, if they want to have a meeting with the two at-large commissioners, like kind of in this forum again. Because I, I would like to know if people, you know, I represent those people too. But I also know the district commissioner, and if I get contacts, need to refer them to the district commissioner. My problem is, for years, is no matter, and I'm not, not anybody in particular, they don't respond back to the citizen. And it's embedded in me. I don't disregard it, even if I say, thank you for your email. And then I get holy hell because I didn't respond. So I don't know if you think that a meeting with individual district commissioners, because when we're at the dais, we get our minute and then told we've got to move on. And, you know, I can't get this stuff worked out. And I want to have a better working relationship.
I think it would be helpful, I think it would be even more helpful for, for the individual district commissioners if we were able to speak more frankly, whether or not we can, because it's always a public sector. You know, because honestly, there's probably some district commissioners that would rather only focus on their district.
Which is great.
There are, there are treason pothole commissioners that love getting in the, in the weeds, no pun intended, and working directly with their people. And if they had their way, they would never cross the border from their district to another district. And that's amazing, because the people in that district are going to get incredible service there. But they're not going to see a bigger picture. So they may say, look, here's the bigger pic, here's my views on the bigger picture. Or if I hear something from my people, I'll let you know so you can help us. But I'm focusing on this, so you don't have to focus on it. Other people want to be a little bit more global. And Kevin is looking at the global budget kind of issues, and infrastructure issues, and, and the pipes and the environment. I mean, he, he has a little more global thing, but also a focus. Knowing where people want to focus their attention helps me say, okay, I don't need to put as much time into Misty's individual district, because she's having trailer park estate meetings once a week. And she has her, her own little, so it's like, okay, she's got that handled, and there's only so many hours in the day. So Misty, if you need anything, reach out. You need me to show up and, and talk to someone? Or you're going on vacation, you need me to be the grand marshal of a parade? Knock yourself out. Call me. But otherwise, I'm going to kind of let you do you down there. And when it gets to a point where someone has a question about some proposal on affordable housing, or a charter or something, let me know. You know, but other people may say, no, by all means, come up here, because I'm, you know, I'm in district ones. And maybe James says, knock yourself out. Come up here all you want.
Do you think that it would be beneficial if the two at-large commissioners meet with the individual district commissioners? Because I don't know what's going on in the districts, a lot of them. But yet, we get the emails, and maybe we can help with our relationships. I mean, I don't, I mean, as long as it's a public meeting.
I don't think it hurts to propose it, because the more meetings, I said this the other day, the more meetings, the better. I'll do a meeting a day. And I'll do a, I forgot who I mentioned too. I mean, I'd be happy doing weekly work sessions, at least having them on the, the books at 9:00 AM every Wednesday. And if we don't have a topic, we don't have the meeting. But, you know, some of these work sessions get kicked down the road forever.
And they're so long.
Because we don't have time for them. I'm not saying to do that. I'm just saying, I'm fine with meetings. So it doesn't hurt to say, hey, if anyone wants to do something like this setting, then let's set it up. Because an individual district commissioner could say, here's what's going on in my district, here's who we can use help on, or here's how I can help you, or, or, you know, stay out of my district, or, you know, you're going to get shot. You know, we can have open dialogue about that.
Right. That's why I called this.
Because, because they may say, look, you know, I'm being told that there's five key issues from talking to people, and one of them is affordable housing. I don't really know a whole lot about that. So if you can come up in my district and help me out with that, that's great. And I'm like, okay, great. Now I know to do that. So it doesn't hurt. I, I think part of the, the problem with this job is, is how the sunshine works. And I understand it, and it's a great law from a standpoint of what its core focus is, is making sure we're not standing in a, you know, a back smokey room, trading votes.
Like they used to years ago.
That's the, that's the intent of it. But it also doesn't allow us, where we're all sitting on the ninth floor, to just be hanging out in the lobby, saying, hey, what are you working on? You know, what do you need help on? Or, oh, I heard this. And that hurts us both from a,
Yeah, you can't.
A relationship standpoint, and from a productivity standpoint with citizens. So if this is how we have to do it, and this is a seemingly simple process, then, I don't think it hurts to at least offer, hey, if you guys want to have one-on-one-on-one, three-way conversations here to talk about individual districts, we're not forcing you to, but we're more than happy to show up in the morning and have that conversation, and see how we can all help each other for the people in your district. I'm, I'm completely open for that.
Yeah, because we, we've talked about this at commission meetings in the past. When Betsy was here, you know, we'll keep saying, well, didn't you all get the emails? We hear that all the time. Yeah, I'm getting all these emails, are you? And we're going, we're not. You know, we don't know what you're talking about, or projects that are going on. And, well, nobody's let us know what's going on, so we can't help you if we don't know. That's what I was thinking. I mean, I know a lot's going on in Misty's area. I don't know. I mean, she's just delivered 1,000 masks and did something else. And I think Reggie's been doing all that stuff too. I heard from citizens, actually. So they're working hard in their districts, but I have no idea what they're doing. And that's okay. But maybe we can help. You know, maybe we could all volunteer, you know, whatever they're doing. I don't know.
Well, I'm taking, you know, I'm taking notes too. But I mean, it sounds like, you know, you want to talk about different format of work sessions. But I know that's why the commissioner's comment section was created at the meetings, was so commissioners could update what they're working on.
That's true, but we don't get a complete report, unfortunately.
That probably just hasn't been something we've fully talked about. If that's the right place and you have time, then, you know, you do have that option every, every two weeks to get updated.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And that's helpful on snippets of, hey, remember that thing we talked about? Here's an update on it.
Yep.
Yeah.
But having a bigger, and this is an hour and a half meeting, and I got to go meet Jerry, but we could continue talking for another hour. Having this kind of forum where you can have longer, bigger discussions about global issues in the district at the beginning, then allows for those commissioner comments for updates on this kind of meeting.
Yep. Kevin, would you want to be the first one to meet with us? To go, what's on in your district? Because I don't, I mean, maybe we can all strategize and help you if there's something I can help you with, or, because we can't talk, except in public. That's why I called this meeting, because we can't talk in the hallway.
I like the idea. I don't know that we need like pre-scheduled, predetermined like quarterlies or anything.
Not quarterly.
No, we just meant like one, like a one-time thing.
Maybe once a quarter.
Right, I was thinking if you just let us.
Initially, once, see if it works.
Yeah, see if it works.
Right. And if you want to let us know, and then let me compile, you know, what is going on in my district. Or at least just to know that if I want to set up something with the two of you to bring you in on a specific project or some issue I'm having in the district, it's, it's good to know that you're willing to do that.
Apparently, this is a thing.
Yeah, do you want to have an, an initial one, and then, then when you need us in the future, we can do something like this. To me, this is great.
Yes, but let me get back to you on it. How's that?
Yeah, yeah. No, no. And then we can also offer it to other, the other districts, right? Maybe you can in your briefings.
You can offer it to anyone. We just have to help coordinate it.
Right. As far as the budget stuff we all talked about, how would you get that out to the commission? I mean, I know, are you going, I mean, just the ideas that we had, is it going during our budget briefings?
Yes, well, we have that scheduled. We have a work session scheduled for February 16th. That's what the pre-budget work session is for. We're doing the pre-meeting of meeting with each other. We've made a, we've made a full recording and notes of what you discussed on January 12th. At each meeting, when you start to bring up any type of budgetary, global issue, revenue discussion, or future things, that'll be added to that spreadsheet. We're adding all the comments in the individual meetings that we're having. We're just finishing up with Commissioner Cruz today. And so that'll all, that'll all come back at that meeting. Whereas before, when we first started this two years ago, and then had it again last year, we did it at that meeting in, in a group setting. Well, now, we will have already gotten all of those comments, and you can actually go ahead and discuss. And we'll get that out to you in advance. You'll know what everybody said in the individual meetings and the other meetings you've had. And then you can either add to it, or you can see things that are in common, give some directives, those kinds of things. So we're actually doing it, we're doing it now.
So the comments we made today will be on that sheet when it comes to the budget stuff?
Actually, they will be. Yes.
So George, for me, if there's things that you want to, you know, like I told you, healthcare, social service programs, children's welfare, animal welfare, wildlife, which is major issues going on right now, but I can't tell you unless we're public. But they're But they're just having, you know, in a fifty by a hundred lot, they're just trying to strategize for the future because the, the directors of it are elderly, you know, they're getting old and it's only two people and there's like three or four thousand animals that are going in through their year. I know. So, um, I, Sherri and I, they've asked to meet with me, um, this'll be, next time we meet will be the fourth time. So something like that would be what, what I can talk to you at the meeting about, so. But, and then you help, uh, find...
Probably expand, next month our work session is on retail sales. You probably expand that to general animal services if you wanted to.
What?
Next, next month, the retail sale of pets is on the February sixteenth work session afternoon after the pre-budget workshop. I'm saying if there's bigger issues with things like wildlife, now we obviously have this discussion about the shelter and animal there. I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think retail sale of pets takes an entire afternoon. I mean theoretically, just, just like housing, we have all things housing. Couldn't we just change that to all things animals and have that as one of them?
You haven't been to that meeting with the retail cell a lot, a few times it has been, but I did meet with them, just so you know, um, uh, the, the Brad Parkers of the world. And, um, I know, um, you know, and I did talk to them, um, so whatever we do, we do. But, um, I did talk to them and they were very cordial and I just said, listen, I represent one group and, you know, that's fine. I mean, it's nothing personal, I mean, you know. But, um, I did meet with them, I was gonna make, uh, state that at my report, but I left the other day and I guess we, everybody was so tired, we didn't really have one, so